First item on the agenda is the planning board would like to welcome Sarah Creighton to the board. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next item would be acknowledgement receipt of correspondence, Helene.
No, there's not. There isn't any.
All right. Right now, the planning board would invite public comments with a little bit, with a limited amount of time.
Ron, this is Christine. May I ask you a question?
Yes.
So we received a document from the open space. Are we not considering that correspondence?
Well, we received from Helen Bethel, you mean?
Correct.
Was that addressed to the planning board or just the chair? Well, I put it up. Yes, we did receive documentation from Helen Bethel on the possible to the selectmen on formation of a committee to study groundwater, I believe. So we did receive that and it's on the SharePoint site in a zip file.
Okay, so that's you're considering that correspondence?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ron, this is Mary. I have a question with that. Are we going to discuss that as a board since it's relevant to the Liberty Commercial District?
I hadn't planned on discussing it tonight. I was waiting to take direction from the Board of Selectmen on whether they want to form a committee and whether they want to appoint someone from the planning board to it.
But we're not going to address it as a board?
Not at this time unless the board desires to.
I would be in favor of that.
All right. Any public comments? Okay, the next item on the agenda is an A and R for five Mascanomo Street. Turn the proceeding over to Mark Lovsky to explain the A and R and then I will recuse myself since I'm a butter and I will have Vice Chair Gary Gilbert to take over. Mr. Lovsky.
Good evening. I'm Mark Lovsky, a lawyer with offices at eight Washington Street in Beverly. I represent the owner of the property at five Mascanomo Street, five Mascanomo LLC. Avoid Steinhoff is the manager of the LLC. The Steinhoffs acquired the property from the Cutler Estate in December of 2020 and they realized when they acquired the property that they had a project on their hands. There's a large old Victorian on the property that faces actually fronts on the driveway is on Beach Street and on Mascanomo Street, excuse me. And for those of you who may have had an opportunity to get out to the site, the dwelling is on the uphill side of the property. The property slopes down westerly toward 108 Beach Street, which is the butter budding property owned by Keith Shaughnessy. And after the Steinhoffs acquired the property, they entered into discussions with the Shaughnessys. The Shaughnessys have a improved property that is tight to the Steinhoff lot line. The property that abuts their property is not really used in conjunction with the five Mascanomo Street property. It's at a much lower elevation. It's overgrown and relatively unkempt. And so it was determined to be in the best interest of both parties to attempt to transfer what's shown as parcel A on the A and R plan in front of you from the Steinhoffs to the Shaughnessys. In order to do that, it was it was necessary to go to the zoning board of appeals because the Steinhoff property is located in District E, which requires 90,000 square feet for a house lot. The existing house lot is 60,038 square feet. And by transferring property to the Shaughnessys, we were going to make the property further non-conforming. We were granted a special permit by the zoning board to enable us to transfer parcel A to to the Shaughnessys, thereby reducing the Steinhoff property to 52,042 square feet. In all respects, the Steinhoff property will otherwise satisfy the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. At the moment, the property, which is at the northwesterly corner of Mascanomo and Beach, has about 250 feet of frontage on Beach Street and 260 feet of frontage on Mascanomo. There'll be plenty of frontage left for the property after the conveyance of parcel A to the Shaughnessys. Parcel A is a 40-foot strip containing approximately 8,000 square feet of land. And so what we're doing is eliminating a non-conformity for the Shaughnessys by enabling them to satisfy the side yard setback. And ultimately, they're going to clean up parcel A because it is a much more logical as an adjunct to their property at 108 Beach Street. We're not creating any new building lots and we've concluded that this is in the best interest of all parties, including our recused neighbor who looks like Obi-Wan Kenobi because of the sun setting behind him.
It's God. It's Godlike.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but this is a relatively simple A and R plan in my view and hopefully the board will concur.
Ron, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Oh, I'm surprised I have signal. I'm way out west. Mr. Lovsky, would it be accurate to characterize this as both lots are non-conforming as to size and that this is really just a lot line adjustment, which since they're legal lots, they're allowed to adjust their lot lines as they wish. There's no parameters to that.
It is a lot. It is merely a lot line adjustment. The Shaughnessy property is conforming. It actually has 93,000 plus square feet prior to gaining the additional 8,000 feet. The non-conformity that the Shaughnessy property suffers from is the side yard setback, which will be eliminated.
And it's undersized in terms of area and that's going to decrease further, but there is no regulations at all that govern that other than their need for a special permit. As far as I see it, so as far as I see it is what I'm saying to the board here is that this is just a lot line adjustment and there's no reason to deny it from what I can see. But I only looked at little tiny images of it on my cell phone. Sorry. So I would move that we approve this A and R. I don't have the exact language of the application to repeat for the record, but I would move that we approve it based on the language of the description of the application.
I'll second that motion.
We're actually technically, we're not, we're not approving it. We're just endorsing it. Is that not true, Helene?
That's correct. And it's endorsing it and it is endorsing it as A and R number 820.
So amend that motion if that's okay.
Please.
Second is a concurs.
So I go forward. If there's any more comment from anybody?
The only comment, Ron, the only comment I would have is that they, there was also submitted the zoning board of appeals decision, which does find it to be not, not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
But that's not relevant to the planning board. What's the right term? I'm sorry, I just forgot. Endorsing the A and R application. So I think it stands alone as an endorsement. Are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'll go around the room as Ron has done traditionally. Sarah.
I.
Chris.
As I say, yes.
Mr. Licio.
Yes.
And Ms. Foley.
Yes.
And I'm also in favor. So that's unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Point of information, Mark. I have the Mylar at here. According to Helene, I can sign it during the COVID emergency for all the planning board, even though I'm recused. Correct me if I'm wrong, Helene. I can do that.
Yeah, I got, I actually asked Mark and he said that if you had a majority of the, of the voting members of the board who agreed with your signing it, you may sign as the, even though you're accused. I hope Mark is still there. Is that what you said?
I am here. Yes.
Did I, I did it right?
That's correct. That's correct. We're willing to assume the risk.
So then you're going to have to take, whoever is chairing this portion has to take another vote that Ron can, that Ron is authorized to sign the Mylar on behalf of the board, even though he is a recused.
I'll move, I'll move that Ron be authorized by the board to sign on behalf of the planning board, the endorsement of the A and R at five Mascanomo Street.
Even though he's recused.
Even though he's recused.
My second. My second.
Mary, second. So I guess, is there anybody opposed to this? We can just assume it's an unanimous vote unless there's an opposition vote. I take it there's not.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, everybody. I suspect that what I do is come to your house, Ron, to pick up the Mylar.
Yes, but I will be out of town on business until Friday.
Well, would it be possible for you to leave it at the town clerk's office?
Not, I'm on a 6:30 AM flight tomorrow.
Ron, if you left it on your porch, I could take it to town hall for you.
Thank you, Sarah. I will do that. I will bag it up and leave it on the porch.
Thank you both. And I will, I will get it at the town clerk's office.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Great.
How do I stop the sharing? Okay. Next item on the agenda is an update from our town planner, Sue Brown, on the LCD overlay district study on what's transpired since our last talk about having them with the remaining monies do a study. Sue, any update on that?
Yes. So first of all, I wanted to, at the last meeting, I believe that I said that all work needed to be done by the end of June. We actually, we, we need to determine what scenario we want by the end of June, but the actual writing of the regulations can go a little further. MAPC got permission to use some of their funds in the next fiscal year, so we're not quite up against the ropes that much. So we can, we'll be going ahead, working on those scenarios, getting those down. Hopefully have a public forum to vet those, get all the community impacts outlined and then come to some agreement and then write the regulations if we're in agreement to move forward with doing so. So I, what I would like to share is just the general idea of what the scenarios would be. I've passed it on to MAPC in the hopes of getting them thinking and working out some of these details, but I expect this, this will be an iterative process. So I just want to share what I've shared with them. And if it, if the board wants to tweak those assumptions that I gave them, if we could do that. So I think if we could take five or 10 minutes for me to share those with you and get your feedback on them, that would be helpful. They weren't actually going to be able to get started on till this week. So I feel like we're, our timing is good now. If we can have a brief discussion about that and I can get your feedback.
Do we have these in our mailbox? I didn't see any.
No, no, I didn't. It wasn't, it isn't anything that's written down, but I can give you the, the outline of it right now.
Okay. I thought you said that you forwarded them to the MAPC.
Right, right.
So you, so they're not written down?
I have them written down.
Okay. Can you forward them to us, please?
I didn't, I didn't forward them on.
Could you forward them?
And I'm not giving you numbers. These are general concepts so that I can, we can talk about them now if that works for the board.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. We still have a time constraint on this. So I think it's germane to talk about it now. And I thought we talked about three scenarios. Let me, one was a Symboli type density. One was a half Symboli type density and one was a commercial type of scenario. Am I, I mean, is that kind of simply putting what we?
That, that, that is kind of simply putting and I fleshed that out just a little bit more for MAPC's purposes and I'm, and I'm bringing it back just to confirm that I've given them the right direction. So it isn't, I haven't offered square footage. It's not something that that, it's not that intense, but I just wanted to bring it back to the board and say a little more fleshed out. Here's what is the direction that I've given to MAPC. So
Okay.
Would, would the board like to, to hear a little more fleshed out version of that? Or?
I think so.
Okay.
So I guess I'm going to harp on it. I would like to have a copy of it. It's just easier to look at it versus just listening. I'm just, so could you send me a copy what you sent? Is it that big of a, big deal? Thank you.
Yeah, I can send it. So the first scenario is really the mixed use neighborhood. I asked him to base it on the Symboli plan in a general way, but asked him to downsize it a bit from that because I think the consensus of the board and agreement for Mr. Symboli is that he would really take another look at those and perhaps reduce the size of those. So I did ask him to, you know, did the uses, were all of the uses that Symboli put on there? And also to look at on the west side to do a pet, a pet care facility on the west side in that one. In terms of design standards, I asked him just to use kind of the design standards that we had in our 40R in a general, in our, in a general sense, to cluster the uses, to reduce the development footprint, to create a village neighborhood character by thinking about what would go together well to make sure that it had, was walkable, that to make sure there were shared spaces for any housing that was proposed and public spaces. And I asked him to think about three to four stories would be okay and to put parking underneath were feasible. So that's just the general guidance that I've given him to date to get them started, to think about what that would look like on that space. The second one was then again, another mixed use neighborhood, but with a scaled down density. And the uses were similar, but I asked again for smaller footprints, smaller number of units. And also I asked him on this one to include a standalone biotech, a building that could be a biotech building or a biotech campus. And we know that was a quarter of a million square, 250,000 to 500,000 square feet. So I've asked him just to, to kind of create in that one, a facility that might be used for that. In the third scenario, what we, what we had talked about is to kind of look at our current zoning, which is commercial only and see what would fit in there with that with some minor adjustments. And one of the minor adjustments is to allow it to go up to three floors because we still, even if we're given a scenario based on the current, we would want it to, to, to reduce the footprints as much as we could, or not as much as we could, but to make it reasonable. So the uses that are allowed under current zoning are recreational offices. I asked him again to do the recreation or the research and development type biotech building. I did ask for the assisted living facility because that is because that is a commercial building. And I asked for the fields, if there was room in that, in that scenario. Design wise, it would be more of an office parks type of development, a campus field and make sure that the housing was more separated from those uses, with the exception of if it was next to the recreational uses. I did ask him to, to keep a lot of the requirements that are under, is under our current zoning, including the single use per lot, minimum lot size of five acres, the maximum coverage by structure, et cetera, those type of things. So that is the general, those are the, those are the ideas of the scenarios that I've asked them to, to lay out. And I'm happy to, if the board has some feedback. Oh, and then I also, I did ask him to put a DPW site on the town owned site on, I think on two of those, just so we could see what that looks like there as well.
Sue, does this group do any kind of engineer, infrastructure projections when they do these scenarios on like demands for water, sewer, electrical?
Yeah. So not electrical, but we will be looking at water and sewer. Yes.
And they will have that, that's part of their scope then to kind of give a rough guide on what the demands would be for each scenario?
Yes. Yes. So they're going to look at revenue projection, water use, water sewer, very similar what comes out, has to go back in. So water sewer, I think we talked about parking to, to look at how many parking spaces, the amount of disturbed surfaces on each. And I'm open to other thoughts, but I think those were the principal ones. Oh, number of children that might come out of it. I think things like, things like that. So gen, very general impacts from a high level.
All right. I'd like to go around the board and ask each board member for some brief comments. And I'll start with Mr. Olney.
So Sue, are we including the property across School Street, the 40B property as part of this?
Yes. So I generally, I think, let's see, what did I? I think that I did have him included. And I, I didn't give him direction other than to put the, a pet care site where the dog care is. I don't think I asked, I don't think I gave, have given him direction yet what to put there. So I think that's a good idea. I did say that, that I wanted the majority of the development on the east side. So let me go back and so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to take your, your direction on that. I think we should show at least in one of them, at least in the scenario that's looking at our current zoning. I think we should do that. I'm, I'm open to suggestions on the other side, scenario one or two, whether we should, what we should model there.
Okay. And my other question, comment is my feeling is that the reason we haven't seen much development opportunity across the way is because of the setback requirements, which make, make any kind of construction unfeasible. And I'm wondering if you're including some relief on the setbacks in this scenario three.
I haven't, but I'm open, I'm open to it. And if we think that that is, I don't, I personally don't think that that's what's kept people from, but I think it contributes to it. But, but I'm happy to make that adjustment because I know it is one of the elements that we thought if we change the underlying zoning, that we would allow more flexibility. So I'm happy to, to take the board's direction. I'm happy to, to hear what others think, whether we should change those setbacks for this study purpose, for this illustration, or to keep them as they are.
I know one of them is like, is 150 foot or 200 foot setback for 120.
It's a, yeah, it's 150 feet from the street setback, which you're right, is, is, and then it's a minimum of 100 foot lot line setback. So if you divide them into five acre lots.
You're getting.
You have a lot setback. So it does definitely take up a lot of space. I'm happy to, to change those, allow some flexibility or just to give a straight number for them to go by.
Okay. Otherwise, I think the scenarios, uses are probably what we talked about. And I think they're very reasonable to get started.
Okay, Mr. Licio, any comments?
I guess I'm just having a hard time. I wish I just had a copy of them. So I'm not really, could you repeat what the housing opportunities are in the first two?
So the, the, the housing in the first one and the first and second one is just a matter of density change. So based, based generally on Symboli's plan, which did include some standalone housing that went, some senior housing that went with the assisted living type facility. And then it did have, in his plan, it did have some multifamily housing that was considered workforce housing in multi-story, multifamily. So it had both of those uses. So they would show up in both of those unless we want to change it in one of them. And or both.
And so the third option only has assisted living?
Yes.
I thought, first of all, I thought we had assisted living. I thought workforce housing, assisted living, assisted living in the first, assisted living in the second and assisted living in the third. I thought that was my understanding. So I'm having a hard time. I didn't think it worked. Sorry. I didn't think there's workforce, workforce housing in the second, but that was my recollection.
Yeah, we can take, we can take it out if that, if the board would like to see it without it, or we can just downsize it. There is, let me just confirm, there is assisted living in each one of those.
Correct.
And, but the only, I, I'm just looking at what I have. Yeah. So it was just a smaller amount of density, but I'm happy to take out workforce housing in number two.
That was just my recollection. And like I said, I'm just.
That's why I'm bringing it back because again, it will be iterative and I think we can take these out. So.
Can I make a comment, Sue? Can you hear me?
Whoever's chairing can.
Yeah, Gary, we're going, we're going around and I'll, I'll call on you next. Christina, are you okay right now and move on?
I am okay, but I really would. And if it's not too late within the meeting, I would like a copy.
Understood. Mr. Gilbert, go ahead. You have the floor.
Sorry, I missed part of what was said. So didn't even meet, I didn't, yeah, because my signal was going in and out. Um, uh, excuse me if I'm repeating something someone else said. I agree with Christine. It would be nice to just write down the program elements for scenarios one, two, and three, and any sort of sizing that you're ballparking for them or number of units or square footage of commercial, just so we can track this and it's a little bit more concrete. I think we mentioned that in the last meeting, but I, it would make it easier to understand where we're going. And I, I would suggest that we consider workforce, workforce housing in scenarios one and two. But just the amount of it would vary. And I agree with Chris Olney completely that the setbacks are a huge impediment and they're just exaggeratedly huge. I think they were sort of arbitrarily put in there to quell, if that's the right word, development. So they need to be more in line with the kind of setbacks one would see in a mixed use district. And I don't, off the top of my head, no numbers of feet to suggest, but it's, they're far too excessive as it is. I think it has to be. Numbers of feet to suggest, but it's, they're far too excessive as it is, I think it has to be changed, or you're not going to see. You'll see very little development and and a road may have to be introduced into the area which creates setbacks also, so that gets complicated pretty quickly. And I don't know if I'm, you know, could you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, so does, Ron, if I may, does someone want to suggest what these setbacks, again, this is iterative and. For a bit, and now is maybe the time to, if we're thinking, do we want to work with a twenty-five or a fifty foot setback? Or or do we want even less than that, do we?
What is more standard, Sue, or does M A P C, they probably have seen. Mixed use zoning regulations countless times that they can suggest what the norm is, or is there no norm?
I I couldn't tell you, I think it, I think the intention behind these setbacks was to. To hide, buffer all of these uses and keep as much vegetation as possible. I think it depends on what are, what your goal is, and remember, this is just one scenario.
Rather than spreading them out and having huge setbacks from each use, we're better to. Cluster them and maintain as much open space around them as possible, that's my take on it, but I don't know how other people feel.
Go ahead, Sue.
So the question is, are we looking to kind of mimic and show what our current. Our current. Regulations would allow, or do we want to sway more to what if we were going to rewrite? And tweak our current regulations in a more sensitive way and. Do the things like cluster that would leave a bigger, smaller footprint, do we want to?
Can we have it, can we get an A, can we get an A and B option out of that, Sue, I mean.
Now you're, now you're pressing for four options. I've got a limited scope here, so I think if we can make a decision.
Alright, let let me get, let me get to here for the rest of the board, and then we'll we'll circle back on what we want to do and kind of get a. Feeling, I we haven't heard from Mary or Sarah, and I'd like to give Mary a chance to speak.
Hi, thanks, Ron, so I guess I'll go backwards and up just since we're talking about setbacks. We should probably look at the map to try to determine any sort of setbacks, look at. Where these lots are environmentally sensitive areas, all that kind of stuff, so. I don't know, I I think we need to look at the map and kind of come to a consensus. I'm a little confused, and Sue, if you if you would please post what you sent to the M A P C in the SharePoint. Because it seems like there was a lot of nuances that I'm not super clear on. The. The scenarios one, two, and three, I was thinking the housing in these different scenarios was mostly for senior housing, assisted living and workforce, so. I'm not sure where. I got that that disconnect, so are we assuming in scenario one that it's Symboli's. Commercial requests that he had? Are these, is it the same?
I know scenario, scenario one is. Basically what Symboli put out there as a concept plan. And I just asked them to reduce the scope a little bit, which is consistent with the conversation or the back and forth that we had with Symboli. So a smaller hotel, a little smaller footprint on the assisted living facility. I have not given him square, them square footage, I've asked their team to kind of look at what might be standard and to prepare it. That way, standard in the area for size wise, so. It is, it is all afford, it is all senior housing assisted. That is affiliated with the assisted living, the only thing that would not be senior housing is the workforce housing, so. I think you said that was what your understanding was, and that is what the understanding is.
Oh, Symboli's is all senior assisted living?
And the workforce housing.
Okay, so you had mentioned multifamily housing, so that's out?
Multi, multifamily is the workforce housing, workforce housing is just simply a term that's smaller units. More affordable, but that's what you would find in the multifamily housing, so that's what I mean by multifamily housing. I I use those interchangeably, so maybe you're confused about that, sorry.
I thought the third scenario was going to be more of like that one kind of. Commercial campus type of thing, the assisted living kind of muddies that water for me, so. From my viewpoint, I'd like to see, you know, the first two scenarios and then a clean third commercial. Scenario assisted living. Obviously can be commercial, but it's not like a corporate campus that we were talking about.
Yeah, I I agree, it is different, it would be, I think the reason for keeping it in there is we know that a landowner. Would very much like to develop it, but you could take that out and. Use a different, use a different use, so I'm interested in what the board wants, wants to see there. They would like that taken out of that scenario, or if they would like to put it in, I don't feel strongly, so. To the board.
Alright, thanks, Mary, Sarah, any comments?
Yeah, well, of course, I'm coming in midstream here. I think a little bit echoing the same comment, I I would suggest that the. We remember what the purpose of this is, and I think is to understand the potential of various uses. To get a sense of what their aesthetic would be, what their revenue potential would be on cost to the town. And then secondarily, maybe some zoning changes to incentivize or allow some of those uses. But it's really kind of a thought exercise, I think, so then to do that. It seems like we'd need a table that says scenarios one, two, and three. Use, you know, assisted living, commercial, workforce housing. And number, rough numbers of square feet, they're going to have to do that, and then, so that might be really helpful to us to see what those three scenarios are. And we may all disagree on what those scenarios are, but then we can kind of mix and match as we get results. And then I will be looking to see in the final report that the that M A P C gives us their assumptions. It's not just the total cost, but what is their assumption of how many kids come out of workforce housing, or what their assumption on a. You know, per hundred thousand square feet of assisted living, the assessed value is, and what the. What the requirements are going to be for water and sewer. I think also to Chris and Gary's point, it would be good to understand what the constraints are, instead of trying to prejudge them right now. As like Mary's point about topography. You know, on at least a Google Maps or the G I S that we have, what are those big? Constraints, you know, mountains of rock or setbacks or, you know, bodies of water. At least on a high level, so where are those constraints on the property? What are we trying to do here, what are the assumptions, and then once we see those, I think we'll be able to say, well, we want a little more of this and a little less of that. Because it. Provides, you know, the things that we want to see.
Thanks, so they will be taken into consideration, the topography of the site, we know. Topography can change, but to the to the degree that they're trying to fit things in, they're going to be working around the. Topography and the resources are on the sites, so that is a, so that is a given, and the the chart that you mentioned, that's exactly how we. Intended to flush it out and and put it down, so. In addition to the the uses, the square footage, the number of units, then we would also have all the projections of. The revenue, the impacts, et cetera, et cetera. At a, at a very high level, so so I will, but I wanted to kind of get this initial feedback first, so. I will, we'll we'll start working on that. On that table so that everyone can see what's generating what. And and I think we can move around uses to a degree, but it would be good if we kind of, if we know what we're all trying to to get to.
So I I don't want to have a series of motions, but I I think what what we need to do is just kind of get some consensus on some of these ideas to give Sue some direction. Sue, like on the setbacks and on the relief and on. You know, what we, what, which, what we want to see in each. Scenario, so. Go ahead.
The the ones that I heard some different ideas on were whether or not you wanted the assisted living in each of the scenarios. And then the other one were, was setbacks, those are the two that I pulled out is. Whether we want some change in this direction, and I didn't hear anything on. And I don't know if anyone wants to. Talk about modeling the the town site for anything other than a municipal facility. We could, but I think it's likely that it would be used for a municipal facility, so if there's any input on that.
Mister Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Are there, are they interconnected, or are they essentially independent? So is an assisted living of a hundred thousand square feet the same? Inputs to the the model, whether it's in all, if it's in all of the scenarios, or does something in? Scenario two affect a hundred thousand square foot assisted living that's in scenario one? Because if they are independent at this level of analysis, then it's not super important that we have. Assisted living in all of the scenarios, but if they are somehow. Interdependent and the cost and the the output we're going to get is different. Depending on what marriage of of uses, then the. Then then that matters at this level of analysis.
Yes, so. So what what I had, the difference for between. One and two and three in terms of the assisted living, the one would be larger, but not as large as Mr. Symboli. The second one would be a smaller version, but still some independent housing with that. The third one would have no independent housing with it, so they would be three different. Two in terms of the size of their use, but that's same uses, but a different size. And then the third one would not have any independent living units with it, it would just be a congregate facility. Does that, does that clarify the change in use, Sarah?
Sorry, I'm on mute, I think, I'm not on mute. I I think I have to, I'm not sure, go ahead.
Okay, alright.
Does any, any comments from the board, any feeling on relief on the setbacks? Give Sue some direction that we would allow for some relief?
Ron, I, this is Mary, on setbacks, but I know we've gone, kind of gone back and forth with what. The boundaries are of this, these proposed scenarios, and have we started at that step, what these boundaries are?
I was assuming, we were assuming the boundaries of what we had put together for the forty R. That's what we had, that's what we had discussed at the last meeting, to keep those boundaries the same.
Okay, that's, is that why you're putting in the DPWs, the compost site?
I'm I'm simply putting, I'm asking, I would be asking them to to model a a municipal use on the. On the current compost site, because I think that's, A, it's the most likely. But alternatively, we could imagine that the town could sell it for a commercial use and put a commercial use there. If we think that's a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, I'm just not clear. I guess I did, yeah, I'm just not clear, it's kind of putting a specific use on a on a piece of land within a. Supposed overlay district, and so I'm I'm trying to figure all that out.
I think it's a, I think it's a desired use and a possa, a good possibility of a use. There, so I think it's, I think it would just be nice to to show it and its relationship to other possible uses. But I'm open to, if others have ideas and want to think of it clearly as a commercial site.
No, I think it's good because it could show impact of traffic and and cars and things like that when they're putting all of the scenarios together.
Ron, this is Christine, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mister Lucio.
So I guess my concern with the three scenarios and including the assisted living in the third. Is that we wouldn't see the potential, we, the lack of input from the assisted living, which I think that could tax our. EMS system, so I would be interested in seeing that removed for that reason, I and I wish I had this in front of me because I thought that's what. I thought we did have three distinct scenarios, I thought we did.
I sort of agree with Christine and Mary on that, I think. The idea was to make it just commercial, Sue, I didn't think there was any, that element was talked about, but.
Well, we can certainly take it out, but assisted living is commercial.
Correct, but that is going to tax, like I said, the EMS system, and we're pretty tight as it is, so I thought it would be.
Most, most, most typically, I think we're not, we won't get to that level of how many police calls, et cetera, like that, that we will. Will have on this, because it's a little higher level. Projection, but typically costs are paid by these facilities for those uses, unless it's a. I mean, for this type of use, if it were a, if it was just a senior living, senior housing. That would be a town cost, but I think most assisted living type facilities. Have their own, cover those costs, but.
So they would have their own contractor?
I think often they do, so I I think those are. But I'm happy to, we can take it out, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue for keeping it in.
What's the pleasure of the board on that, or?
Thanks.
Well, I think my under, my my assumption was that, as Sarah was suggesting, that we, if we have it in scenario two, we could just apply to. Scenario three, so it would be nice to have it without any type of. Assisted living housing purely commercial as current zoning. I thought that was the understanding, that we were going to pretty much current zoning and build it out as much as possible.
Thank you.
Really, where necessary.
Did I hear you, Chris?
I think you heard Gary Gilbert.
Gary, did I hear you, sorry?
Yeah, Ron, I I agree with Christine, I think. One of the, one of the virtues of having three scenarios is that they're different from each other, and you could take parts and pieces of each. And perhaps juggle them later, but it's helpful to see contrast, and. If the third scenario has no assisted living, and I would suggest the second scenario might have a decreased size of an assisted living unit. Those kinds of of variable, ver- varied uses and sizes. Give us something to look at and see what the impact is, the build out, et cetera. So contrast is, I think, what we want to seek when we're doing three scenarios.
Yes, Sue, so I think general consensus with the board, and I don't want to speak for everyone, is to pull that element out of the third one. Unless there's a, an objection, I think that's kind of where we want to go.
So Ron, can I?
Yes, Chris.
There, I think the reason, I think the scenario three was to simply say, what is allowed now, what uses are allowed now, and what does that impact? And if assisted living is allowed now, we should include it, it's kind of silly to rule it out. The other thing I want to say is that, you know, we're not trying to do a land use plan here, we're not trying to lay these things out, we're discussing zoning changes. What the effects of those zoning changes might have. On various revenue and costs and all the other things that are, that would come out of it. And I finally have something about setbacks. I I don't think setbacks are so important here, it's more lot coverage that we should be concerned about, how much of a lot, how much of the land we aren't covered with. Buildings and parking and kind of thing, and if we could sort of say, you know, under scenario two. Maybe twenty percent coverage and under scenario one, forty percent, thirty-five, thirty-five percent coverage. That might be a more useful metric of what we're trying to accomplish here. That's just my two cents, but if you want to take assisted living out of scenario three, I don't think practically it makes any difference. Not going to be opposed to it.
Okay.
Ron, this is Mary.
Go ahead, Ms. Foley.
I agree with everything that's being said. I think I do like the idea of having to see, being able to see the contrasts. And with the third scenario being strictly commercial, we can determine the revenue generated in and we can look at all the pros and cons, you know, with the housing pieces relative to the not housing pieces, you know, all the different impacts with water, sewer, schools, traffic, all that kind of stuff. So we can, we'll have a better assessment, numbers to look at. So I would, I would have the third option be just commercial.
Okay. Sue, do you have a good feeling on the board here or do you need, do we need more? Anybody else?
I'm good. I don't have a, I don't have a clear direction on the setback, but I think I will, if, I will let them know that in order to make a reasonable density of commercial uses in that final one, that we wouldn't hold them to the 150 and 100-foot setbacks and have them to place it to be what they might think a carrying capacity of the land might be, with the clear knowledge that we're trying not to denude it and come up with a, you know, and have a total build out, that we're looking for something that would be a reasonable alternative.
Okay.
With our, in our town.
Would it be reasonable, would it be reasonable to assume the setbacks in the cluster development that we just, as part of the reconsification?
So I think we could, those were very, those were very flexible. The, most of the setbacks for the cluster development were to protect it from other residential, so we wouldn't be doing that here.
Not necessarily, yeah.
Right. If we're not showing, if we're not showing any residential in that third scenario, then it wouldn't be something that we would need to deal with. But I can ask them to make a reasonable projection if we don't have a hard and fast number.
Okay.
If I say to simply buffer the uses, is that something that we agree with or do we not want to buffer those uses? I mean, we're, we're requiring, our, our zoning requires a five acre lot. I mean, that's going to buffer something because I don't think any use is going to use the entire five acres for a development. So I think definitely there's going to be some buffering there. The difference is, do you want it closer to the road so you don't have to have more and more asphalt to get into away from the road, et cetera?
Reasonable buffering.
Reasonable buffering.
I could ask a question, please?
Go ahead.
Sue, is there a map that has buildable lands? Has that been provided by MIPC? Have they looked at it, determined what is buildable and not?
Yeah, so, so other than the wetlands, it's all buildable. The, the question is, what would be reasonable and what would be cost effective to whatever use is going in there? So I think you can assume that almost anything is buildable. Again, it's, it really, really is, you really need to engineer it out before you come up with that. But if you were, if we were to do a build out analysis, they might come up with and say slopes of a certain degree would, they would take that out. But we haven't asked them to do that. But they'll look at those slopes and place things reasonably. That's what, that's what we're asking them to, to do without.
So they will do that?
Yeah.
Well, I don't, they're not going to create a, a, a map that shows, you know, a buildable land. They will take all of those and create a map and create a layout that they think would be reasonable.
And will they provide their assumptions?
Yes, yeah.
I think we've got clear understanding and we can move ahead. And hopefully they'll get something to us. Sue, what's the schedule on that? Is it, you know, summertime?
Well, the, the scenarios and the projections are going to be by the end of June. So, so we need to, we're going to, we're going to try to get them to, to move along on it quickly, so.
Okay.
And they were also, they've also, they've already started doing kind of the market assessment to, to say what's, what's trending in the area, what's reasonable to expect for development and that type. So those are also assumptions that they will kind of build into this or let us know to say, you know, if you're thinking about offices, here's what, here's the likelihood of whether or not that might get built in the, the current economy. So we'll have that as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'd like to do, just take a little something out of order. I'd like to, you know, bite this thing, or the review of the comments to mass housing I'd like to do next. So Sue compiled the comments that she received from you, all of you, into a document that was in your SharePoint site. And then Sue wrote a recommended comment letter, which was also put into the SharePoint site, what, a couple of days ago, Sue? And what I'd like to do now is kind of discuss these comments and have some kind of direction on which ones we want to do and how we want to approach this. So let me just share this. Is this coming up on your screens?
Tiny print.
Yes.
Tiny print, okay. So it looks like Christine and Mary and I sent comments in on, on this. And then Chris had a comment. And then Sue took, took these comments and then composed a, more of a general kind of scenario. Let me call that up. Has, has everyone read Sue's?
Ron, just to clarify, my intent was to just give a, a framework, a draft letter to Mass Housing Finance Agency that the board could tweak, make changes to. But I think it's more helpful if they get kind of a narrative to explain the pros and cons of the development and also what the town is doing. So, and I know some folks have some, some additional edits that they would like to make and some comments on that. So just create, helping to create a framework that captured the sense of the board.
So let me. I don't know if I'm sharing the right one, but.
You're sharing the draft letter right at the moment.
Okay. So I, I, I'm hoping the board read some of these comments and then read Sue's letter. And I would be looking for any feedback on how we want to proceed on moving this along, which I believe is due, whatever we do tonight, I, I think we need to have this all re, all the comments incorporated by a week before our next meeting so we can look at them again because I think they're due mid-June. Correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, but I think we need to get these, what are, what the planning board wants by mid-June.
Yeah, the Board of Selectmen have to submit their comments by June 24th. So you would want to give them a little time to, to put it into their packet.
All right, so I'll start off and I'll go around the board and I'll start with Sarah.
So a couple of, I have a bunch of edits that we probably don't want to wordsmith here that just add some specificity and rewrite a couple of things. So I can pass those along to Sue. Two substantive comments is one, I think that the letter does not reflect the comments of the board related to the site plan review, the design concept, and that the size and scale of the project are, and the architectural features of it are inconsistent with the town's character, which I think was reflected in the draft comments that people had and as something that I would share. So I have proposed some language around the issue of the, the aesthetic design, which I know is probably not going to go too far, but I think it was consistent with the, what I heard from one of the meetings I sat in on yours a while ago and as well as those consolidated comments. The second piece of this that is a larger issue in my mind is the board, this draft letter doesn't appear to take any position on the project. And I'm new, so I'm not certain if there has been a position. I know that prior, when it was with the Board of Selectmen for the negotiation of the LIP, that may not have been appropriate and, and I'm not sure how people feel about its appropriateness now. And then my opinion on that, I keep hearing that, that one of the advantages of this project potentially is that it helps us meet some of the goals in the master plan. And I don't disagree with, I, I do agree with that sentiment, but having sat on the master plan committee and thought, thinking about this, I feel that the master plan visioning process that we participate, many of us participated in, and the resulting master plan really didn't anticipate this scale in, and at all. I think the, the envisioned way of meeting that was, you know, something like Summer Street or some of the proposed work of the Affordable Housing Trust with, at the Plains and Newport Park and some additional scale like, like downtown Summer Street or maybe some of the work on Alma Street. So I think that there's, both are true, that it's, helps to meet some of our goals for the master plan, but at a size and scale that is, was not anticipated in the master planning process. And I think the master plan goal around town character speaks to that portion of that conflict. So I'm curious to hear the fellow board members' comments about whether we want to take a particular stance on this project that's, that's more than simply, please look at this and please look at that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gilbert, any comments? Can't hear him.
I don't think he's here, Ron.
Okay. Mr. Alomí, any comments?
So Sarah made some very good points. I absolutely agree. I, however, I do not think taking a stand on this project is going to be very useful. The state is going to do what they're going to do. And I think we can point out all the, all the things we'd like to see changed in it or, and there are quite a few, including the architectural parts of it. Again, I don't think the state's going to care so much what we think about architecture, but I think we can make the point. But to actually say we're either opposed or for this project, I don't think has any bearing frankly, right now. So I, I wouldn't, I don't think it'd be helpful to take a position on it.
Okay. Mary?
I think with taking the, a position, both could be true, what Sarah and Chris said. I think we can take a position on points that we are left to review, so we can object on certain points. I think taking it out, kind of a higher level, I, I thought our kind of quote assignment with giving comments was, was at a very high level bullet point in that we would discuss these as a board and these need to be drilled down and go into much more detail with, you know, everything from the, the septic to the traffic, to the drainage, to design, to character, to blasting concerns. I mean, it's, we have to do a site plan review and discuss and provide our concerns and provide, and possibly put positions in, in those statements. So I think a lot more detail has to go into this. It's currently too vague. I think as a planning board, we should, we should be prepared to get into the specifics.
Excuse me, Ms., Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just for a little clarification, at, at this point in time, I, the types of comments going before mass housing are not quite the, the drilled down ones yet. And at this point, they're very specific items, mass housing is willing to entertain. I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to check out online what those might be, but, but Sue Brown has a really good beat on that. And I, I think rather than getting too broad at this point, if there's an opportunity to look at what mass housing specifically deals with. And Mary is right, those will come later, but right now, that's not what mass, mass housing will be entertaining. So I don't know if this helps at all, but, but Sue would be able to offer some good guidance regarding what it is mass housing would listen to. And I'm sorry to interrupt, but just hopefully this gives a little more clarity.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Christina?
Well, I guess if we had that clarity, and I'm sure why that clarity wasn't given to us before we were sent on a task. So earlier today, I distributed something that I found because I thought it was, our, our direction was lacking and I think our, the, the letter was lacking in direction and opinion. So I distributed something that I found from Wes Newberry that was a planning board's propose, I mean, their comments on a proposed 40B that I thought was a great framework to start from. It started out what we were looking at and general consensus and definitions, and it wasn't too high level, but it did give an opinion and why. So I guess, is there a guidance document of what exactly we should be saying? I guess, why weren't we told if there is a direction? Why weren't we told that two weeks ago?
At the top of the letter, excuse me for interrupting, is at the top of the letter, we do have MHFA is seeking comments on three areas. Is that what Becky is referring to, Sue?
Yes.
Oh, no, those are the exact details, but that's not the point. I mean, the point is the layout, the conversation, the detail. I, I don't think we hit those points in the proposed letter that we have. I think it's really generic. I do think we need to take an opinion. I don't know if this letter says much. I don't know if it says that we're for it, we're against it, we're concerned about some water quality. Is there something that says that why we shouldn't talk about why we're concerned about the water, water quality? I guess that's a question for Sue. And that's it.
So I, I think you're welcome to, to massage this, however you like. I was simply trying to put forth a, a narrative type of framework that instead of a list of, you know, bulleted concerns that you could give to the, the agency that could say, oh, these are the things that they're concerned. the agency that could say, oh, these are the things that they're concerned about, and this is why, and put it in a, in a in a narrative, in a perspective. So and there's a lot of information that's not known yet and won't be known for a while. You can say, you know, we need this study, we need this study, we need this study, but that they already know that, they already know that that's next in the process. So so that that's just not helpful for them to get. I think I think there are ways you can flush that out. And if the board wants to take a stand, a direct stand on whether they're for or against, that certainly your prerogative to do that. Again, I'm just trying to create a framework and I did check out the letter that you found, Christine, and I also thought it was very good. Obviously, they put some, a lot of time and thought into spelling out exactly what they liked or what they didn't like about the project and the problems that they saw with it. So I'm trying to find it here again, but I did read that and I did think it was a well-written letter.
Yeah, I thought we, the assignment was to treat it like a site plan review and be specific on some on stormwater and safety and things that we normally look at during a site plan review. And I thought I agree with Christina that this not, doesn't have any specifics, but then again, maybe mass housing isn't looking for that. I am a little bit, I don't know the group and don't know what they're looking for and to Becky's comments, maybe they are just looking for what concerns mass housing and they don't want all these specifics. I don't know, but that was kind of our initial assignment was to make specific comments, I thought. And that was the direction. So.
So the specifics, if you look at, maybe you want to put up the list that you gave me, that of the compiled resources and if there's anything in there that you want in the letter or think is more appropriate to send as a bulleted list, it certainly, you know, that certainly, my feelings won't be hurt if you, if you don't use the framework that I put forth.
Ron, this is, this is Mary. Could we get some guidance? I mean, I think we're kind of spinning around that we go high level or we don't go high level. I mean,
Yeah.
Need to understand stormwater mitigation, yet we don't have any documents regarding stormwater. And there could be very specific things with stormwater that we would like to bring forth. So I guess that's the, sorry, Ron.
Is that what they're looking for, Sue? I mean, are they looking for that?
Yeah, you can't really, I think other than saying that it's in a sensitive resource area and that that there's the, that you're, you know, you really want to be, make sure that stormwater impacts do not impact that resource area. I don't know what specific things beyond that that you might say that you could address with any certainty now. Sarah might have some ideas because this is the world that she lives in. And I'd be happy to take her guidance on it, but the things that I saw ensure purity of drinking water need fire flow testing. Those are things that that I think will just kind of, they would just kind of glaze over. They want to know, are there severe environmental problems? Are there severe health and safety issues with this site? And then are there more, you know, are there things that you want to see because of the the site in terms of site layout, et cetera? I think those are the things where that they could, you know, adjust, but saying that you're, you know, I don't know how to, I don't really know how to provide more guidance than that. This is the lowest bar. So they're not want, I mean, if you have something specific, if there's a, if there's a resource there that you know is there, they would want to know about it. If there's a deliberate, if there's something that's a showstopper, they want to hear about it, but they know it's large. They know it doesn't look like anything else in town. That's, that's kind of a given. So.
But I guess we don't tell them that there's no water out there, that there's no sewer capacity out there, that the treatment facility is going to be adjacent to wetlands. I mean, we, I don't see that picture being painted from what this draft letter says.
They certainly know that. And if you want to point it out, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. If the board thinks that's important to point out.
So if they know that and we're giving comments, I guess, to my opinion, they want us to reiterate what's important to us and what we would be concerned about if we were looking at this. So if if they already know this and it's just procedural, then I guess why, why do it unless we're actually going to dig into it and tell them what we're concerned about? Details.
I think you do tell them what you're concerned about.
No, well, we got specific. And maybe that's not, that's not what we want to do. I'm a little bit confused myself on this. I thought we were trying to get give specifics. But if we want to take, you want to go a little higher level. But I don't, you know, I don't know. Some of these may be showstoppers. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I think that there are, if we confine ourselves to the three things, site suitability, I suggested some subheadings, design concept, which as we mentioned is was not in at this moment, but I think we can add something and appropriateness in relation to the housing needs and strategies, which I think is quite detailed in this draft. We can add particularly around evaluation of the site. It seems that that's going to be the place where we might have the most jurisdiction and expertise, even in the absence of complete studies. There are a few zoning or bylaw that while this project is exempt, if they were subject to them, they would fail. And one of them is the earth removal by law, for example. So we, we can point that one out and any others where, given the information provided at this point, the project would not meet the the town's bylaws. Another one that is, I believe, and I haven't looked at the current plan, but I know in the last plan that went to the selectman was the slope of the proposed road at whatever the grade was. And the fact that it would be a non-compliant ADA sidewalk if a sidewalk were provided. So a safety issue out on, coming out onto a main road. That I think is consistent with the kinds of things that we can say are concerns based on the information we have so far. And then I think the other category of things are things that we are concerned about and don't have enough information. But and that would be the size and construction of the septic, the stormwater detention systems. And that to accommodate any of those would require significant deforest removal of trees and just further just, you know, you know, site work. And that we would that, and perhaps, I'm not sure how much lot coverage is disrupted in the plan, but I suspect that it's that too is far in excess of what we would normally look for. So I think we could kind of parse these things out into things we know, like the blasting and the site removal. That's pretty clearly would violate our, our bylaws if they were subject to them and is disruptive in many ways, right? And the grade and and then we can comment on our concerns and ask them to, as Sue has, has written here, ask them to pay attention to the other issues, but without a stormwater management plan, we can't accurately speak to whether it would appropriately manage stormwater. So I guess I'd be happy to work with Sue to try to take another stab at it that does that kind of level of review or of, you know. And also I have not looked at the letter from that Christine provided, so I'm happy to use that as in part a model, but if that's the direction people are interested in.
So Ron, I have a couple of comments.
Yes, Mr. Almy.
I think Sarah's approach is a good one. I think the whole thing should probably start with the preamble saying, we don't really have enough information to give as much of a specific response as we'd like, but here are concerns that we suspect are going to come up over time as we go through this process. And I think highlighting the slope of the driveway is a good one. And the fact that I don't think they even have a sidewalk and yet they claim it's walkable to downtown. I think catching them in their own, their own proposal is, is a good idea. And in fact, I did read the Newbury thing that Christina provided. You know, ironically, I wish that that proposal is what we were dealing with here because we'd be much easier.
Agreed.
But.
I like the format. I thought it was well-written and laid out well.
Well, what they were able to do was to take the developer's language and then fire it back at them. Show how they were being inconsistent. That's harder for us to do because we don't have that kind of level of detail, but I think where we can do it, we should. And, and the fact is it doesn't comply with zoning, but you know what? The state doesn't care. The question is what's reasonable that we could object to that's not based on our unreasonable zoning? And I think that's trickier. I think we could point out where it doesn't comply with zoning, but I think we could also say in addition to not complying with zoning, it's, I don't know, it's poses risks to the public health and safety of the residents of the property or whatever. But I think we have to be consistent and we have to give reasons for it. And I'd be glad to work with you all to make all this happen, I guess.
Well, to make this all happen, we got to kind of get on the, we got to get going on it and we would need to get something that the rest of the board could review like early June. I'm thinking prior to our next meeting so we can tweak it and get it out of here, so to speak. So.
I think that's possible. I don't think it's worth a couple of days of work if we.
Okay. Is the board comfortable with that approach?
Ron, this is Mary.
Yes, Mary.
I think it, I think it's great. I think again, anyway, I can help. I will. I think with, with some of the things mentioned, I would really like to possibly put in there the lack of secondary access in a heavily wooded area. We've talked about the steep grade of the road, but there's also the long length of the road and it's got the steep slopes on either side of the road kind of falling down. And obviously the impact on the drinking water. But yeah, anyway, I can help.
I'm wondering if we could make it a living document in SharePoint and solicit comments. I don't know if that's legal to do that, but I'm thinking we're heading towards like a subcommittee here almost or I don't know.
SharePoint has version control, so therefore it's, it would be, it wouldn't be any, I think, I think you'd be okay with it.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's not violating any laws, open meeting laws by, you know, giving opinions outside the meeting.
I would have to, I would have to, I think we would be wise to check on that. I don't know.
So I don't want to, you know, compromise anything, but okay.
But I'm happy, I'm happy to work with a couple of folks to.
Okay.
It just.
All right, why don't we do that? And then the board can kind of look at something and make and make some quick adjustments during our next meeting and, you know, get a final draft out of here by, by mid-June during the day. Is that is that a plan? I, I think. Any objections?
Yeah, I think that's the plan. I think if we use Sue as the focal point for this, just feed stuff to her and she feeds it back. I think that's fine.
Okay. All right. Where's my agenda? Okay, thank you. So just a couple of administrative things. Lauren's gone. We have liaisons to the various boards. There's a document in SharePoint of who the current liaisons are. I highlighted the ones that Lauren has. I mean, a simple swap would be just to put Sarah in those. But my thoughts were if you guys could, if the board could look at the current, your current assignments, and if you want to make any switches or changes, why don't you bring them to, for discussion at our next meeting? And we will assign or reassign liaisons. So that's the purpose of that being in there. The the recodification roadmap committee, we haven't even met or done anything yet. But I still, I am still thinking that the idea on recodification needs to be made easily for the public to understand. I I am thinking, I know Sarah, you haven't been involved in recodification, but I was hoping, not that I want to put a ton of things on your plate, but I was hoping you could help out with the committee with, based on your experience and it would be a good idea to to, you know, get into what we've been doing for the last two and a half years on recodification. If you could maybe help out with that committee, I thought that would be good. I also think we're going to have to come up with a scheme as to what we want to present in November, which recodification items do we, I don't think we want to take on a lot. I think we want to kind of do this in baby steps, but it's my opinion. And start with mostly administrative and definition things. So it would be a lighter lift initially to bring forward to town meeting. And then maybe as next year, at this time, we will have gotten into a little more of bylaw changes of substantive measures. So first I would ask Sarah if she would be willing to help out.
I'm willing.
Thank you. And any comments from the board on that approach?
Ron, this is Christine. I really like that approach. I think that, I think I have talked about that from the beginning. I think that's really important. Just clean this up, go back to exactly why we've started this process and not add a lot, keep the changes out, recodify and then move forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so we'll move forward on that. Thank you, Sarah. The so we're a new board. My thought was, and I'm just throwing this out there, was to have like we did two years ago now, a retreat. Now that COVID seems to be going, you know, which seemed, the state emergency will be lifted in mid-June. I'm thinking if the board would like to get together on a Saturday morning for coffee, maybe at Tuck's Point this early, late spring, early summer, just to kind of talk about our backgrounds, try to figure out what direction we want to go in with some of these things and kind of work together as a board, you know, and try to, you know, build some consensus and things like that. So I'm throwing that out there as an idea of, you know, getting out together again. Haven't seen each other's faces in a year live, so any, any traction for doing something like that? Or do you think it may be it's just, you know, not, not, not a good idea?
I think it's a great idea, Ron. I think it's well past due.
Any other comments on doing something like that? I mean, it can't just be me and Chris.
I concur, Ron. I think it's a great idea. And I think we should bring up what we had agreed to two years ago. See how we did.
I have the agenda from what we did two years ago and I can bring, I can resurrect that and bring it, bring it with us. So let's, I'll move forward for a date on a Saturday morning at Tuck's Point and bring coffee. let's, I'll move forward for a date on a Saturday morning at Tuck's Point and bring coffee and donuts or bagels. And we'll chat for an hour or so. And we'll have to invite the public, of course, but is that a plan? Can't just be me, Christina and Chris. Kind of got to be everyone, I think, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Sounds good to me, too.
All right. Both Garry's aren't on, but I'll check with them. All right. Thanks. I'll, we'll move forward on that. Talking about liaisons, so we have a little bit of a snafu on the minutes. The, the agenda says April 26 minutes, but they're really the May 10 minutes. So, and we also had the zoning workshop minutes from April 29th. That's Sue compiled. So Helene, did we get any comments on either sets of minutes?
Not to me.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Just typos, I guess, if you want them, Helene.
Yes.
So on the May 10th, under discussion, decision of warrant, Article 12, the second paragraph, kind of in the middle, it says noting speaks of what is going to be built as a result of the blasting. Not sure what that was meant to say, but.
Nothing. N O T H. Nothing.
Speaks of what is going to do. Okay. And then I think that's it for that.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. Okay. Any subcommittee or liaison updates from anyone? Chris?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ron?
Yes.
So.
Oh, I got a vote.
Take a motion to approve.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
I'll move that those minutes get approved, the May 10th meeting, Ms. Get approved as amended by Mary.
Is there a second?
Second.
And how about the, the workshop minutes?
And the workshop minutes, Mary, any issues?
Um, no, I just had a couple of follow-up questions with that, but no issues on the minutes.
Oh, so I'm going to amend my motion to approve both minutes, May 10th.
Okay, minutes to approve both, and it's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Creighton?
Abstain.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Bowley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert? Not, not here. Mr. Olney?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So minutes are approved, Helene. Moving on, a subcommittee liaison update, any updates from your account, your liaisons? Or your subcommittees?
So I have a brief announcement. Well, I guess everybody saw it, that the Powderhouse Lane closing with the North Shore CDC was happened and I'm not sure of the time. I know that the Affordable Housing Trust contributed about $400,000 roughly of contributors' money to the project. And during the CDC got another 800,000 roughly of contributions directly. So the closing has happened. It's going to take quite a while for the dust to settle from all this, but eventually some or all of the units in the property will be probably reduced to where they currently are, which is around a 60% AMI rent levels, which is a great thing for the town. So we're very excited about that.
Great. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Also, the Affordable Housing Trust would like to meet with the planning board to discuss the, the public housing sites and the DPW site, just to, just to get your involvement in this process. That should be happening soon.
Okay, let's set it up. Let us know. We'll, we'll get that on the agenda. Okay, anything else? Any, any, any planning board member wants to bring up something that's not on the agenda? Okay.
Ron, Ron, could I just, could I just remind folks that there is a local rapid recovery public forum tomorrow night that's focused on a discussion about how the town can help downtown businesses recover from the effects of the COVID pandemic and how to be more resilient in the future. So it's a public forum. It'll take from probably about from seven to eight 30. There'll be breakout rooms for both Essex and Manchester by the Sea after a brief presentation that includes both. And if you can encourage any business owners and/or residents to share their thoughts on that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Sue. And just a mention to everyone, as I mentioned earlier, the emergency declaration on COVID is expected to be lifted in mid-June. I don't think the selectmen, and I don't know if Becky's still on, have made any determination on meeting again in public. Becky, are you, has, has that happened? Or what's expected? Okay, but.
Yeah, we haven't done anything yet.
There would be an assumption that I assume at some point we will be meeting again in Town Hall. So.
Yes.
Keep that in mind. I don't know if they're going to allow Zoom participation or how that's going to work, but it's coming, so.
Ron?
Yes.
Can, should I reserve a Zoom room for the first meeting in June?
Yes, well, our next meeting is June 14th, correct?
Yeah.
And then there's town meeting on June 21, and then we meet again on the 28th.
I just, I, I have to reserve the room and then schedule it. So that's.
I, yeah, I would resume, reserve through June unless we hear otherwise, at least.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
Second, okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you all.
Good night. Welcome, Sarah.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks all. Thank you all.